You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the December 9th meeting for the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county dot org.
All right, I'm calling the meeting to order. Let's please stand to recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Joan, could you please do the roll call for us?
Present, Douglas.
Present.
While Vice President Samantha Arnold.
Present.
Ralph Box.
Present.
Sam Paxton.
Good morning.
Rich Young. Thank you. Martha Woodset, please. Blackboard present, Jean Paxton. You see her? No?
She's not on, just got to join the meeting.
Okay. BVA President Matt Bowler, who he's absent. Floodplan Administrator Andrew Virchichini, he's absent. And Plan Commission President Isaac Depple, did he get on?
Is Isaac on?
Uh, no, we don't have anyone on yet.
No, no one. Okay.
Okay.
They're absent then. And Samantha Arnold for Bayside and Technology, they are here. And Road Commissioner, last but not least, Ralph Loughout.
Okay, thank you very much. I, yes, I, oh, I'm sorry.
I think we missed the second line. Joan's here, obviously, I'm here. Would you check for fire chief?
Fire chief?
I'm here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just wanted to do that one to test.
Good, thank you. I bet you had it.
I made it while I was.
Okay. Council members, have you had time to take a look at the revised agenda?
Yeah, it looks good to me.
Okay. No other comments, questions? Rich? Sam? All good? All right, then I need a motion for adoption.
Motion to approve the agenda as per.
All right, Sam Paxton moves. Second. I second. All right, Samantha Arnold, second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. The agenda has been approved.
What was it with?
Pardon?
With what?
Five ayes, five ayes, five. Okay. Ready? Can we move into, let's move into the approval of the minutes. I've got them in, I guess, backwards kind of order. We can start either at the top with November 11th or down at the bottom with August 12th. So maybe August 12th? Okay. Okay, Joan?
I'm with you.
Any other comments? I know Samantha had sent a couple of comments, I believe it was on September and October meetings, right? I saw, did anybody else have any other corrections or additions to the meeting minutes? Okay.
They've been changed, but as I explained to the others that were here before you, I have had problems even pulling up a document from my computer while trying to print.
Okay. And the ones that are printed out this November, I was talking to Joan beforehand, this is not the revised, this doesn't have the corrections that. Wait for November. She said she printed out for us the November ones, but so you know these are not. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. All right, thank you.
On Brenda's computer.
Okay, now August, so the minutes of August 12th, if there are no other questions or comments on them, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Ralph Box says move, I need a second.
Second.
Sam Paxton, seconds, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay? Five ayes.
For the record, Jean Paxton is coming in.
All right, thank you. Jean has joined the meeting.
Oh, Virchich?
Yes. She's remote. Okay. Let's move on to the minutes of September 9th, 2025. Any other additional comments, any changes?
For September?
For the September 9th Town Council meeting.
No.
I have another one too.
Everything is good now?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So I need a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the September 9th, 2025.
Samantha Arnold moves, I need a second.
I'll second then.
All right, Ralph Box, second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Five ayes. Okay. And the minutes of the September 9th meeting have been approved. Let's look at the meeting minutes of October 14th.
Those are not approved because there are changes to be made.
Okay.
Changes were made, just that I can't get them printed.
Okay, but well, okay, so then we will see this, we will revisit this locally at the last meeting of the year then.
Same with November.
Okay. Oh, same thing with November minutes as well?
Yeah.
All right. So we're going to table these to the last meeting of the year, end of year meeting. Okay, tabled, tabled. All right, thank you very much. Okay, let's move into the reports from the committee's officers and clerk treasurer.
You come up in November, then meeting, what are you going to do with that?
We're tabling that.
They'll be tabling those next month, the next meeting.
Until the next meeting. Okay, so clerk treasurer, please, with the vouchers.
Okay. I sent you a couple of vouchers, but I also have some that you approved and weren't signed. I have, pardon me, one of all of the ones that need to be signed for tonight were approved and signed up yet.
All right, I know that we have not done anything with the April 1st through 8 vouchers.
You're not going to get that tonight either because, and you may not get it because I can't figure out how to wait and get it out of the computer because it had printed previously with stuff.
Okay, so those we're going to be tabling again?
If you can't print them, can you email them to us?
No, because I have to have the computer to get them out of the computer.
Oh, okay.
Explain that. Can you explain what the issue is with the computer?
The issue with the computer, although 100% when I'm, when a computer tech comes in on Monday, I cannot bring up any documents on my computer right now. It just sits in and spins and spins and spins.
Can you email, can you go to email?
I can't get into email. I just told Ralph I was able to get into email. I went back in there and checked it just before it came up. It was gone too. I think it has to do with. 18, 10.
There was an update today, two replacements at our office with a couple of our staff computers that moved to similar.
Oh, yeah, Tuesday's is Windows Update Day. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Or Microsoft's update.
All right, then.
Microsoft.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you.
Let me go through the March 31st edition of vouchers. I show that they were approved but never signed.
March 31st.
I have my last time.
March 31st.
I think we signed those last month.
I submitted them in May and nothing changed, you got them, they're still.
March 11th approved and signed, you're saying March 31st?
13th.
March 13th? There's May 13th, there's May 13th that we.
March 31st additional.
Which is it, March 13th or March 31st?
March 31st additional.
March 31st.
First prevent.
I don't see these on last months.
We go to the month before because I thought we did.
Yeah, because I brought this on.
Did though. So all I need is signatures on those. And then, that was March 31st. And then March 11th vouchers.
We signed those, but.
We approved and signed those last month.
I don't have anything signed in my files. I searched the files. I don't have anything signed.
Whatever, whatever was given to us to be signed, I didn't give back anything unsigned or empty.
This is March 11th ones. They were approved but not.
You have it in notes that you supplied, March 11th vouchers approved and signed. That's what you have there.
No.
Yeah.
Maybe.
They aren't, I just went through all of them. I went through all the vouchers that were printed.
Signed in May need to sign. May 13th, May 13th, I think we do need to sign them. I don't remember if they were signed last.
She's talking.
March. March, okay. This is March.
No, that was May when it was submitted vouchers.
Okay, looking at the.
There's a May.
Oh, wait a minute, it says March 31st additional vouchers dated here. Do you have that on your previous minutes?
I have, I have.
The notes from.
I have that we signed the May 31st, AKA additional vouchers previously approved that we signed them last.
Well, I don't know what you did with them, I might have signed them because I know.
All right.
This says May, but it's March.
But it's March 31st, okay.
It's what it's printed in.
Wait, so this says May 13th. And the, so I would not.
These are the vouchers, and this is just the date that were printed out probably, I'm not sure. Could that be it, allowance? Maybe it was that same.
This is the dated.
Uh-huh.
But up here, this usually says the month that it's for, and this says May, not March. I.
That doesn't say on up above. It says down here.
No, up here it says May 13th, it does not, and down here it says.
May 13th is the date I originally submitted them.
Okay, March 31st.
I don't think they approved until October or November.
So. All right.
And I have the same thing with the.
The May, March 11th ones are, you just gave me here, we did approve them last month.
Yeah. But if you signed them, I don't know what you did with them because I do not have.
Joan?
I searched.
The council members signed. I signed after the meeting, and I brought them in and put them up on the counter because you were still working in the office. I did not take anything home. So I left everything, I didn't pick and choose, I left everything that was signed in there.
Just signed them so I have copies for the file because I do not have.
They were approved. The March 11 vouchers definitely were approved according to our, our minutes here. That's the only one, this one is the one that I wasn't sure of.
This one, we have not, I don't think we ever saw this one.
I told you that.
The March 31st additional, let me go back to April and see when we had those.
Well, let's hit the one time we had a need signed. Because I have to have something in the file. I don't think they'll, I'm going to do an audit and I put in there, approve it, mostly.
These are good to go. This one for the March 11th, these are good to go. If you're still searching Samantha, maybe send them off to the others to sign.
Okay, so we want, you want us to sign these?
Joan is asking, even if we have signed them, that's okay because we approved them last time. Wait, March 11th.
Okay, this is March 11th vouchers dated December 9th. This one is March 11.
They were printed, I believe.
This says March 11th dated May 13th. How many do we have?
Is this March 11th or March 31st?
This, March 31st.
Okay, so that's a different one, okay? March 31st is over here. March 31st, the same one you have there, it's a copy.
Okay, this one has two different cover sheets. So I, I'm not signing things that aren't consistent at least.
Okay, some is correct here, dated this day of, okay, yeah, the dates are completely off here, March 31st, March 31st. These dates are off, these are June, June, this is May, May. Let's see, everything in here, we need to reset these, okay? Are the signs the same?
So.
58, 60.
In fact.
128.
We signed, these March 11th, we said we signed them first, and it could be.
Yeah, okay.
It could be.
March 31st, the reason, two different dates at the top is because I submitted them on 13th and I submitted them again on June 10th. That's what those dates are.
Submitted them to who, to us?
To you.
All right.
I don't have any other council.
Okay. Joan, you do submit things to the state, so we're just asking to make sure, okay?
I don't submit this to the state, they do.
But if I'm signing, I guess, it's fine, but just if I'm signing two copies, the two copies should be printed or submitted to us on the same date. The fact that they're different dates, all right, then here.
Anyway, I want to, yeah, that's a good point, and just keep that as a point there, all right? We know that this is. I'm going to change the date to today's date here.
Perfect.
December 9, 2025.
Maybe for the council's sake, take pictures of all the signed vouchers.
Good idea.
Okay.
They get misplaced somewhere along the line.
Can you give me a copy of this name?
Not bad, yeah. We're going to borrow your pen. Yeah, it's fine. All right, here we go, I have done that, and here we go.
So we still don't have the April 1st through 8, that's can you carry it over?
Joan says no. Okay, now just, May 13 vouchers, mine here says we need to sign May 13 vouchers, but that's, we just did that now.
No, we just did March 13th, we did not do May, we did March.
March.
These are March. So what we need, what we were supposed to have tonight is April and current.
I want to have one other one here, and it's for July 1st to the 10th. And when I checked, I found out it's been approved, but we still need signatures.
Uh, July through 10th. Through the 10th?
Right.
When was it approved?
I did write it down, but it's been approved.
How do you know if you didn't write it down?
Yeah.
I wrote it down that it's been approved.
I don't have that here.
I don't have, let's see, that's May. Okay.
I did not have the notes from the previous meeting. Let's check in here.
What date are you asking about?
The ones you just said.
July 1st through the 11th.
The July 1st to the 11th.
July 1st.
Approved in, in July 11th, it was approved, I'm sorry, was approved in September.
No, the July 11th to July 31st was approved and signed in September.
These all of them?
Hmm, I don't have it, I'd like to review it because I don't have that I approved it. Okay, which is that, that was the 20?
Which one did you want?
Okay, which, July 31st, you said? Which one is missing, Joan?
I just handed you.
No, no, you didn't give anything right here, you're speaking about July, I'm asking.
July 1st to the 10th.
July 1st to 10th, okay.
I show that it was.
I have the July 31st here.
I have that they both were approved in September.
Uh, no, the July 31st payroll was approved, and additional vouchers were approved in October. Okay, I don't have the ones for November here, but I do have.
I haven't given them yet, you've got enough.
No, no, I'm sorry, excuse me. I have the July 31st payroll that we approved it back October 14th.
I don't want to do any payroll right now, it's not.
Joan, I'm just saying what was approved on the, in, in October, we also approved the July 11th to 31st additional vouchers. We also signed them. That's the July 11th to 31st, so which other ones from July are missing? The 1 to 10?
Yes.
Okay.
I wish you had to do the minutes.
This is, Joan, we're taking notes as well, and this is what we're referring to right now.
Let me go through what I have, and then you can tell me what you.
I'm yes.
So if we need to sign the July 1st through 10th, can you print them out or email them to us so that we can review them? Because I don't have notes that I approved, we approved them. So we should assign this for approving them.
I agree.
Let's, why don't we?
Look on the November.
So the April 1st through 8 vouchers are going to be tabled to the next meeting. Can we table them to the next meeting as opposed to waiting until January? Joan, is that possible?
In the.
We should do it in December.
Okay, so we'll table the, the.
To end of year.
April 1st, April 1st through 8th. We'll also table the July 1st through 10th to the next meeting. That means that we just have those two that we need to review and approve. The March, we have signed today, and then we need to look at what you've printed out for us, which is the November.
You have, you've got those.
November 12th through 30th additional and the December 1st through 9th, we have those.
Yes, you do.
And once you sign these, can you take a picture of those?
Yeah. I emailed them, and I had them here because I couldn't do it here.
Yeah, I did not get them emailed, but I have them here, so I think the council can review these now.
She reviewed them before now, that's why I sent them to you.
I don't, not, we did not, I did not receive an email from you.
I didn't get any email, you know, on time either. We ate supper and I cleaned up and I came here, I wasn't reading emails.
I don't think there was, I did not receive any email Monday, so.
Vouchers, I only got, okay. Check and see, I got the minute, meeting minutes I have, I have those.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Where's the other com, okay, you've got some on there. Yeah, there's just two of them.
Okay. Well, that answers that question, I think.
Okay. That answers all the questions.
Right. Oh, vouchers, okay.
I have no questions about these vouchers.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I don't.
Any questions? Okay. If we don't have questions on anything here on these vouchers, then I need a motion to approve the additional, November's additional 12th through 30th vouchers.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. So we have Ralph Box says make the motion, I need a second. Rich, Rich Young, seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, that's five ayes for November additional. All right. Here are the documents to start. Okay, here we go.
Great. All right, borrow your pen.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Okay. The, now, Joan, the next one's December 1st through 9th.
Right.
Is that correct? Okay.
11th.
So I'll make a motion to approve the December 1st vouchers.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so Ralph Box has moved to approve the December 1st through 9th vouchers, Samantha Arnold has seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, five ayes. For December 1 to 9, and the other one was.
I have, here also on the May 13th, 13 vouchers that were approved on November 1, November 11th, and I don't have any signatures.
May, you're speaking about, oh, we're going back to May now?
Yeah. Maybe because you wouldn't let me carry.
We signed those last, we'd signed those last month.
Joan, you asked us to do the November ones, let's not even go there now. Okay, May vouchers, May 13 vouchers or no?
The May 13.
We need to sign them, yes.
Signed them last month.
Doesn't make any difference, we can sign a second copy if we need.
Okay.
Mine, I got a question here, do we need to sign under this? If we need to, but we've approved it, so that's fine.
You get the May vouchers, you signed those, and you did the December, about August 30th, about 31st.
This is just one copy here of that one, the one you gave us now.
July 1.
Is there, is there a second copy of, wait, which one is that? Oh, this is the December one.
I'll make an extra copy.
So we only have, okay.
I'm assigning September 1st to the 9th.
I'm going to sign these now, I'll take it forward.
31st, and nobody's listed.
Joan, excuse me. You asked these for us to sign now because you asked for them back right now.
I do, they're going back.
Okay, so we're passing those around, we're not ignoring you.
May I make a recommendation that before we hand off all of the vouchers back to Joan when we finish signing them, make a comment so it's recorded that Joan here are the signed vouchers.
We can do that too. Only I've already passed one set over to Joan.
And I already filed in my file.
Okay, so I am passing along to Joan now the November additional vouchers signed by the council members, November for November 11th through the 30th, 2025, here we go. So she just did, are these done? Is this one done? Okay, thank you. Okay, I am passing along to the clerk treasurer, the vouchers for March 11th, 2025, signed by all council members. Here we go. Okay. Are there any others that need, any other vouchers, Joan, that needed to be addressed today?
The payroll. For which month? I have the May 31st payroll. Let me do that last one. May 31st.
Okay, you did that last month. We approved and signed that last month.
May 31st?
No, it was approved, but I didn't have anything.
Let's see. May 31st, we, no, that's May, I don't have that one. Okay.
March 31st payroll.
Yes, yes, you had last. Okay, this is May 31st payroll, I'm just looking over here. It says approve the May payroll. And if this is May payroll, we did approve them back in November.
Right. A lot of this was November. So was the June 30th approved in November?
Uh, yes, and I said, and we signed everything you had given us at the time, so I don't know where all those are. However, we will sign them again because they were approved. May 31st payroll was approved.
Okay, here we go. Another one for the October payroll.
They need a re-signal, re-signing. Are all of these the ones that we approved last time?
Yes, it sounds like it.
It is.
The entire stack was brought into the office for you, Joan. I don't, I don't know where they went.
I have some of them, I just don't have all of them.
Okay. October 25th vouchers, but it says payroll inherent, just as, I have December. Okay, my notes from last month, I've got October vouchers, but it doesn't say.
Your home?
It's payroll.
I switched, oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 you need.
It's an October voucher.
Okay, I'm looking here, October payroll and June payroll. June payroll, we approved and we signed, and you need those again.
Yes, I do need.
All right.
Whether they were signed or not, so I have no idea where.
And the payroll, the, for the payroll from November, I'm trying to find, I have voucher payroll November.
You don't have the payroll because.
October, October payroll.
Didn't get it in time to, the payroll, so we didn't have it, I just got the timesheet.
Okay, we have, Joan, I do, I have a list here from the agenda that we worked on last time. And we have, we approved October vouchers, 15 to 31st, but we did not address the October payroll at the last month's meeting. So we need, do you have that anywhere?
No, I agree, I don't have it, we looked at October payroll, so November.
I just checked all the notes on the agenda, I make notes every single, everything that we're doing, I write down, so, but I don't have all the ones back.
When you get through with them, I'll talk to the tax.
So it looks like we have to, that would be the October payroll we have to address, that one we didn't address or approve.
Right.
Okay, so I'm passing this one back. Which ones are these? Okay.
So I make a motion that we approve the October payroll, October 2025 payroll.
Let the others take a look at it too, so they know.
Okay. And this is June, which we already approved, so we can sign. Uh, oh, I see.
I am returning to Joan, June assigned copies of the May 1st to May 13th, 2025 vouchers, as well as the December 1st through the 9th, 2025 vouchers. Joan, here are those signed copies. Which one is this? Okay, I am returning to Joan, the May 31st, 2025 payroll vouchers that had been approved earlier and signed again today, here come those.
Did you get pictures of those?
Yeah, I did, I just did, I just did, hold on. I have these in there. This is May 31st payroll, yep, got it. Here we go.
May 31st, that's.
That's May 31st. That one is May 31st, okay. And now we have to approve these, okay, so.
So I make a motion to approve the October 2025 payroll.
I'll second that.
Okay, Samantha Arnold, approved, who seconded?
Ralph seconded.
Ralph, okay, Ralph Mox seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Everybody? Okay, fine, thank you. Five ayes, and the payroll for October 2025 has been approved.
Approved and signed. Now we just need, well, which you can call up somebody.
Okay, I'm called up on this, I need to see what.
Just get, just get pictures.
Okay.
And then we need November.
So which one is this one here? Okay, that's the June payroll. Okay, I'm returning to Joan now the signed, approved and signed, June 30th, 2025 payroll vouchers, as well as the October 2025 payroll vouchers. Here we go. So now we just need November payroll.
He's not gonna get November payroll, as I just stated. I did not get the timesheets until.
Okay, she didn't.
Gotcha, okay.
Alright, okay, thank you. So we are done out until the end of the year meeting, I think, on the vouchers. Okay, so is that it for vouchers? Or do you have other things about billing and vouchers to tell us about?
No, they don't does it.
Okay, thank you. I do have listed under here, because we haven't done this for a while, but I did add again the report on the status of collecting outstanding fees and/or utility invoices. I don't know if you want to address that right now, I stuck it under here.
Right.
Pardon?
I will address it right now. We keep track of it. We try and be investigators and find out our people, what they're doing, so that we don't miss anything. And anything that is ignored, those attorney Damski.
Okay.
You can get it from him if you need.
Okay, alright. Alright, thank you. So, perhaps, Mr. Damski can tell us when he does the attorney's report, write on how big Stan?
Yeah, I can let you just go to the court office.
Okay.
They do, they do provide status of the non-payable.
Okay.
If not, just about a regular, she goes and has stuff.
Okay.
And we have asked, remember, we've collected quite a bit, just.
Since we.
At home.
Okay.
So as far as additionally, we're kind of set up until we get to a significant amount, and set up the things that are worthwhile, and then I bring it back to the board and decide if you're making a bunch of.
Okay, alright.
Which we've done a couple of.
Right. Okay, right, awesome, thank you. Okay, very good, then thank you for that. Alright, next is the report on the ordinance codification project. Samantha?
Just quickly, they, previously, as I reported, we handed off all the ordinances that have been created since 2009 to them, and they're working on reviewing them, comparing them to Indiana law, and they will give us back to us probably some time in the new year. In the meantime, just double checking with Joan, they sent, we asked them to invoice us this year for the first half, because that's how we budgeted for it. So they sent an invoice on the 19th, they resent it this morning, and I sent it to you. I wanted to make sure, Joan, that you got it.
I just got it, yes. We did not do the payroll taxes, you want to go back and do this?
For which month?
I have April, March, and May.
April?
March, May.
We approved and signed all of these in October. April payroll, August payroll, July payroll, September payroll.
I still have them right here, I didn't make new ones. And there's no signature.
But Joan, we have, we have who moved to approve, we have who seconded, we have the number of votes, aye. This is.
That I agree with, but as far as signing these, there's none here that are signed.
The payroll taxes separate from the payroll, you're talking two different things.
No, they're separate. We paid payroll taxes, ones following payroll.
So are the payroll taxes?
Payroll taxes from April, March.
I have payroll, I write down if it's tax. I see this, these say payroll. Do you have anything from the 14th of October?
Uh, October.
How much taxes? Not even seeing my note.
Mine say, I've got it says payroll here.
Uh huh. I have March payroll, April 30th payroll, May payroll, August payroll, September payroll. You're saying that payroll and payroll taxes?
Taxes.
May payroll taxes was not approved, I know that. Okay, so this is payroll taxes, so.
They weren't approved this.
So which months are we talking about here?
We're talking about April, let's go back, March, April, May, and July.
We did approve.
March.
May 31st payroll taxes.
May, May payroll taxes were approved.
I still have the summary sheet right here in my hand.
Or don't.
I have any signatures on it.
We.
So I don't know what you signed.
You must have lost.
Or you, the entire file must be missing, Joan, because we signed them all. All of these council members signed them. I signed them in the end and brought them into the office before leaving. If we need, do you have copies of them?
Yep.
We approved the May payroll taxes, we approved the June payroll taxes.
But fact is, I don't have a sign. And I didn't lose them because I stick them in, when I get them, and then I.
You're saying, by the way, you're saying May and July, so you have June?
I just, July payroll taxes, no, I don't have June.
Okay, you didn't mention that before, so.
I don't have July listed, these are from the last month.
Yeah.
They approved June payroll taxes.
They did.
Yeah, last month, we removed, we approved May payroll taxes in June last month.
But I don't have anything signed for May and for July, and for April.
November.
May, July, or April?
June's approved in.
But I don't even have July here or April here, unless those were earlier. It has, May payroll is included here.
But it's not next to payroll, I'm working payroll taxes, please. We can sign. It's possible, I don't remember July being approved.
Well, May, June, we approved and signed last month. If we need to sign them again for May, June, we can.
Payroll taxes.
Payroll taxes, sorry, for payroll taxes. We approved those in November.
Okay, I got the April payroll taxes.
April, we approved in, I think in.
I have payroll, not payroll taxes listed, so I don't, you need to check.
A lot of payroll, but no payroll taxes. July 31st is not signed either.
Those these are the minutes from November, I mean, is the agenda.
In September, we're missing payroll taxes for July and August, need to supply in October, and then October, we did not get them.
May payroll and July.
So we see August.
I don't see April payroll anywhere, we didn't look at these last payroll taxes?
No, they didn't have these tax.
Okay, April, we does not have, okay, here's April. April 30th payroll taxes. Okay, payroll taxes, okay, April we don't have. Oh, wait a minute, you've got two sets. April 25th payroll, oh, okay. April 25th payroll taxes.
You have to.
And here it says April 30th payroll taxes.
Right, 30th payroll.
The sum is exactly the same, but you gave me two sets. April 25th payroll taxes?
Just like the vouchers, you get two.
And this is April 30th. No, no, Joan, there's, there are four sheets, all of which list the same amount of money. One of them is listed as April 25th. Oh, you know what, you, you know what, you don't need two copies of these here. You see what I'm saying? This says April 30th payroll, and that says April 2025. So you gave us four sheets of the same.
It's the same thing.
Okay.
Why don't you tear the ones up that we're not signing?
Yeah, yeah, so that we don't have to do them again.
I'm not a JREAP person.
Well, then maybe put a big X through it. Okay. April 30th payroll taxes. Did you say they, these were not approved?
No, these are not been approved.
Okay, alright, April payroll taxes, for a sum of $941.59. I can pass this down to you, you can take a look if you need to, and then we'll make a motion to approve.
While you're looking at those, I make a motion that we approve the April 30th.
April 30th.
Payroll taxes.
Okay. We've got a motion to approve the April 30th payroll taxes. Do I have a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Alright, Samantha Arnold moved, Ralph Mox seconded, all in favor of approving the April 30th payroll taxes, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, five ayes, thank you. Those payroll taxes have been approved.
Who made the second?
Ralph.
Ralph.
I did.
Thanks, Ralph.
Okay, now, the next piece of documentation I have is for the July 31st payroll taxes in the sum of $113.53. Samantha, please pass these along.
These are the July?
Yeah, these are July 31st payroll taxes. Take a look, I may have them loaded yet, take a look.
Yeah.
Pass them over. Okay. Alright, when you take a look, please, I, I need a motion and a second for the July 31st payroll taxes.
I'll make a motion to approve the July 31st payroll taxes.
Alright, I need a second on that. Okay, Sam Pax is second, Rich will get you next. Well, they both went up at the same time, so it's like, okay, thank you. Monkeydo, so these have been taken care of, I will, is this, is this just one set, or is there another set?
There should be two sets there.
Okay, this is April 30th, okay. Okay, so we just need a back original, right? Right? What is this? This is the, that should be the July? Oh, July, yep. Okay. Thank you. Alright, I'm handing back to Joan the signed voucher sheets for the April 30th payroll taxes, the approved and signed, and for the July 31st payroll taxes. Okay, Joan, here's two sets of documents, thank you. Is there anything else?
Uh, yeah, she sounds like she had a bunch more, actually.
Your pardon?
It sounds like there's a few more months that Joan has for us. We need the. Joan said you had March.
March 31st payroll taxes. Which I don't pass 99. But you said you signed them.
So we signed, that we approved and signed them in October. We approved and signed, it says March 31st payroll, April 30th payroll, August 31st payroll, July 31st payroll, and September 30th payroll. Those were all approved and signed October 14th. But I don't have a listing of payroll taxes.
And that, that's how it appears on general produce meeting minutes, is that they were approved and signed?
For the, for the, for the payroll or payroll taxes?
Over payroll taxes.
Payroll taxes are listed?
The payroll taxes that we approved in October, of the October meeting. Those are also noted, like these are in her handwriting, in her.
Okay.
Recap of the meeting that they were approved and signed, I just wanted to have this for the record.
Okay, so, so that it's not payroll, but payroll taxes, you're saying, from October 14th?
Whatever you were just referring to.
Okay.
The one that we, we signed up.
So what, what I have, I have to say, mine notes say payroll, not payroll taxes.
Mine say payroll as well, so, okay.
Yeah, there is a difference.
So then let's, let's look at, um. March.
Do you have those now, Joan, or not?
March what?
March 31st payroll taxes.
Yep, I have them.
Pass them over this way, please. March 31st payroll taxes, the sum is $2721.2. Is that because it's a quarter?
That must be why.
That's, yeah, that's for a quarter, the quarter. Alright, okay.
These are data, totally, which makes me think we did, but yeah.
Payroll taxes, and what's the date of them?
March 31st.
Okay, March 31st.
Payroll taxes. I make a motion that we approve the March 31st payroll taxes.
Alright, Samantha Arnold has moved, Rich Young has seconded. Alright, thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, five. These payroll tax vouchers have been approved.
For March 31st.
Aye.
Yes, March 31st, thank you.
Now we need, um.
Are there any others?
April. You're saying April, right? Joan?
I don't know.
Do you have anything else? You said you had more things for us, so.
Well, I had the chat.
Pardon?
We only have one copy of the March 31st payroll taxes.
That's okay, sign it, Joan, we'll make a copy. Then we'll have to sign the second copy.
I'll be taking a photo anyway. Pardon?
Okay.
Yeah, I do have the April payroll taxes.
Oh, there's three copies of the sheet, but only one top sheet.
Okay.
Okay, so now we need to do April, which I think we previously approved, but you're saying we did not approve or sign? So once.
Wait, April what?
April payroll taxes.
Payroll taxes.
April payroll taxes. So take a picture, I hand those back to Joan, and then we'll do April.
Alright, I have just taken a photo of the March 31st payroll taxes for 2025, and I'm returning them to Joan. Okay, I have here the April 2025 payroll tax. Okay, I have here the April twenty twenty five payroll taxes in the, um, here it is, where is this, of nine hundred forty one dollars and fifty nine cents. Alright, so here we go, you can pass this down, and then
To say one.
Alright, I need someone to make a motion to approve.
I'll make this.
Okay, Rich Young makes a motion to approve. I need a second.
I will second that.
Okay, Ralph Fox seconded, all in favor of paying the April payroll taxes. Aye, okay, five ayes, and these vouchers have been approved.
So that's March and April. Now, Joan, you said May, which we approved in November.
We just, we just signed May, July, and in the last ten minutes, we've done.
May, not payroll taxes, those were payroll.
Could be payroll.
That's confusing.
March payroll.
We just signed, we just signed him on May payroll, we signed again. But this is now May payroll taxes. We have payroll, we have payroll here, that's on the first payroll. October, April thirty payroll, uh, July thirty first payroll taxes.
And we approved the May payroll taxes.
Last month. March thirty first payroll taxes, we just did an April payroll taxes. We didn't do anything with May.
But we, we approved the May payroll taxes last month, so we only need to sign them and we approved and signed them.
Yes, we did, we approved, and we signed them.
And we signed them.
Yep. So is this the May payroll taxes? Okay, these have been approved already.
Mm-hmm.
It was in the sum of thirty dollars and forty five cents, so here we go. Sign again. Alright, there's a lot of copies of this one here.
It's possible, one would be.
Okay, there we go. This is a May thirty first, and a May thirty first again. Okay, so these are not necessary.
Okay, this is the April that we just approved and signed.
Signed. And this is May thirty first. That we previously approved, I'm just signing. Okay, I am passing along to Joan the April twenty twenty fifth payroll taxes. Okay, yeah. Approved. Approved and signed.
These were approved by Samantha Arnold, Ralph Fox.
April.
Uh-huh.
Were, it was Ralph, Rich Young.
Rich Young.
And moved, and Ralph Fox seconded. April payroll taxes.
Are you finished with your ordinance? Report, are you finished with your ordinance?
Oh, yeah.
Reporter?
I don't, actually, no, I want.
Okay.
We have a few more things to prepare.
Yeah, okay, very good.
I'm gonna get clarity on that.
Very good, good.
Payment. She's jumped back before we got clarity on that.
Yeah.
So this is May thirty first that we are signing again.
Yeah.
And while you are taking a picture of that, um, now we have June, you have June, Joan? Payroll taxes?
That's all I have. My center, all of them that I have.
Okay. Okay. I am turning into Joan now, the previously approved May thirty first payroll taxes, they were signed today uh, by the council members. Here we go. Are there any more, Joan, that you have for us today?
This is all I have.
That's it?
That's all.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Joan, for those. Let's move back to the ordinance codification project report.
So my only question is, you got the invoice today, correct, Joan? I just wanted to verify that.
Yes, I did state that. I have it. It's dated in as of today.
And so we'll be able to pay it before the end of the year?
I would hope so.
Great, just wanted to clarify. Thank you, that's all I needed. Thank you very much.
What, you think I don't have a payment?
What's that?
You think I'm going to hold it forever? Well, I'll get that stuff off my desk as soon as I can.
Well, just in the past, we've had a couple of things that have been sort of slid off somewhere else, so at least, um, we know we gotta keep this in mind, so thank you very much. Thank you, um. Those were just. Okay.
Signed, I don't.
Of ordinance. Okay, we are going to move on to the resolutions and ordinances now. So we are going to have a reading of the restated noise ordinance uh, this month, so I will ask, um, Sam, are you ready to read that for us?
Yes.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Uh, before I start, we need to, my number is probably forty five dash.
Oh, six.
Oh, six. Thank you. This is based on work that the stone, you guys all reviewed it, I got a, uh, one modification uh, from Ralph Fox earlier today, and incorporated that into the document that I've come through and read. Um, at the recommendation of attorney advance speed, we amended and restated the noise abatement or original noise abatement ordinance and amended uh, ordinance that Ralph Fox produced and championed. So this is, uh, further updating and restating the entire noise ordinance for the town. So the Town of Michigan Shores, Indiana amended and restated noise abatement ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh six. Amended and restated ordinance of the Town of Michigan Shores, Indiana providing examples of noise prohibited, clarifying the term person, and establishing fines and penalties for repeated noise violations as found in Michigan Shores, Indiana Code Title III Public Common Safety and Law for Article One, Chapter Seven, Noise Abatement as amended by Michigan Shores, Indiana Ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero seven. Whereas the Town of Michigan Shores, Indiana has established and amended the noise abatement ordinance to ensure that all residents throughout periods of the day that noise generation is defined restricted in some cases and prohibited during quiet hours, and whereas the Town of Michigan Shores, Indiana has experienced noise violations being recorded on a repeated basis, and whereas the Town of Michigan Shores, Indiana seeks, seeks to strengthen compliance with noise abatement ordinance by letting and enforcing penalties for noise violations and repeat noise violations. Thereby, the Town Council of Title Town Council of Michigan Shores, Indiana hereby adopts this amended and restated noise abatements, abatement ordinance. Section three dash one dash seven dash one prohibition of noise from construction in lawn or home with maintenance during surf hours all times or central time. A person, whether they be the property owner, family member, guest, renter, or any person otherwise present at the property owner's residence, or commercial entity who, A, commences any construction or landscaping work activity before eight AM, or commences or continues such activity after seven PM, any person or commercial entity, C, I'm sorry, C, any person or commercial entity who commences or continues such activities on Sundays or legal holidays within the town limits, B, any person or commercial entity who between the hours of seven PM and eight AM, Monday through Saturday and seven PM and afternoon AM, Saturday to Sunday, commences or continues activities that generate noises customarily resulting from construction work which are not subject to the requirements obtained by the community and/or noises customarily resulting from the lawn maintenance or the maintenance of grounds utilizing noise generating equipment such as, but not limited to, lawn mowers, leaf blowers, or chainsaws, E, quiet hours, any person, whether they be the property owner, family member, guest, renter, or person otherwise present at the property owner's residence, or commercial entity causing any discernible noise, I'm sorry, discernible sound, including but not limited to construction yard or other work activities or generated from general sources such as pets, animals, gatherings, parties, outdoor fires, fireworks, music, sports activities, swimming pools, or any other source either outside the residence or from within the residence beyond the zoning law during the hours of ten PM to eight AM the following day, Sunday through Thursday, or of eleven PM to eight AM, Friday to Saturday, or eleven PM to ten AM Sunday, or ten, eleven PM to ten AM legal holidays, commits a violation. F, noise generated by snow removal, snow removal or emergency response units are exempt from these regulations. Section three dash one dash seven dash two penalty for violations. A, any person or commercial entity that commits a quiet hours violation as reported to and confirmed and documented by the police shall be issued a quiet hours violation citation by the police. Each citation shall be subject to a fine of one hundred dollars per occurrence. The property owner of record and the offending person shall be jointly and severally liable for all fines. B, any person or commercial entity who commits two or more violations within a two-year period that are reported to the police and are confirmed, documented, or cited by the police shall be subject to fines of up to twenty five hundred dollars per occurrence. The property owner of record and the offending person shall be jointly and severally liable for all fines. Any questions or comments?
I have none. No, I think this is good, yeah.
Okay, um. Rich, anything? So at this point, I would love to, um, have a motion to approve this ordinance in the, uh, for the public meeting at the end of year meeting, especially scheduled meeting ahead of the last meeting that we have. Uh, so I would like anyone to make a motion.
The motion is, we can't approve it till the public meeting, correct?
No, but we can approve it at the meeting, so what we can do is this would be a.
First reading.
Yeah.
Is that the right one? So I can motion to approve the amended and restated noise abatement ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh six on first reading.
And we can move on to the next meeting, which we'll have at the public meetings.
Okay. I second that motion.
Okay, so Ralph Fox has moved. Samantha Arnold has seconded. The approval on first reading, um, and the plan is that it will be, a, a public hearing will be held regarding this noise ordinance prior to the start of the end of year meeting for the Town Council. Okay? Thank you very much. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Samantha, I do have one question with our contract with American Legal. If we do get this approved at the end of December, can you send this to them and it gets included?
I, probably. They, they said if it's one or two, they could probably fit it in, depending on how far they are. There, I told, I listed this, I told them we had two that might be coming.
Just show this one.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, okay, thanks, Sam. Uh, let us move now to Police Chief's report, please. Chief Swiss.
Good evening, everyone. From the month of January, the Long Beach Police Department responding to three hundred and one calls for service when compared to three hundred and fifty five. In the previous year for a decrease of fifty four calls during the month, um, November, eleven incident reports were documented and a total of five individuals were arrested. Specifically to the Town of Michigan Shores, um, November twenty eighth, we, along with Indiana State Police, authorities from Alamo Corner and Lake County investigated a threat against one of our state legislators along with, um, the Michigan Fire Department and EMS. It was found to be a hoax. However, we had to take the threat as being a valid threat and therefore tied up emergency services for several hours that particular evening. I've since then spoken to the state legislator and assured him that we'll continue patrols throughout his neighborhood and throughout the town. Since then, have not had any rear threats, which is good news.
Okay.
Yesterday, I shared with you the email, just as a reminder, the Flock cameras, the license plate reader cameras, that quote, "will expire at the end of December." I'm not encouraging you to take any action on that, I understand that there may be some financial concerns of taking additional projects such of that magnitude. Therefore, if it does expire at the end of the month, if you do consider that in the future, we just have to ask for an updated quote from the Flock Public Safety, so.
Okay, thank you.
Aside from that, we have major concerns about the law and the ecology.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for the chief, council members? No? Alright, thank you so much, chief, okay. Alright, Fire Chief Gary Bendix.
Uh, for the month, we spent a hundred sixty two point four one hours and everything. We get fourteen calls during the month. Uh, we had three Michigan Shores, uh, we had a mock room that Mark was talking about. Then we had one medical call, and then a couple of treatments in the corner of Oklahoma, El Porto, we had now. Another tree came down before that. But I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas after the first year. I will be taking a leave of absence for about two months. I have to get my knee fixed. So my trustee will be back.
Alright, all the best. Best wishes too.
Hopefully, I get it done and I get back quick.
Okay.
Thank you, Doc.
Okay. Alright, Building Commissioner Brian Alexander.
Hey, guys.
Brian, excuse me, don't speak as you walk around, because we want to make sure you're picked up by the mics, okay? There's a mic right here, okay, and of course, you know, for the TV. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Before we had a number of building permits issued. There were five altogether, one tree removed with a minute. And for a copy of three six twelve first foot, that was the failed inspection from last year, and those will be done. And so that, that involves that problem. We had a couple of new ones lately, a bathroom addition, a generator installed, and a siding replacement. For the short-term rentals, we, um, four twelve El Portal was renewed after walkthrough on eleven twenty eight. The next one to be renewed will be two eleven Koken Drive.
But you haven't scheduled that one yet, so it hasn't been renewed until you do the walkthrough.
We do get, but it doesn't expire until next week.
Gotcha.
Code enforcement activities for four twenty four Groveland. They still have the deadline of December seventeenth. Clear up a lot. There hasn't been much progress on that, however. It's my feeling that, um, due to the infinite weather, perhaps you would want to extend it, but again, that's up to the council. For four twenty Groveland, um, I was in contact with the owner and they are limiting rentals to thirty days or longer and are adding that to their listing that's being advertised. That was the one that was as ever placed in the future, yes.
And what about thirty eight twelve Brookside? Thirty eight twelve Brookside is, when I went out there, there wasn't a car there, but Dana has advised me that there could be people staying there and more has to be done with that, and it hasn't been done yet. That's all I can say.
Yes.
I don't, I had a big buyer recently, so.
Yeah, well, not for a couple of weeks now, but the, one day I went by, there were two vans, um, and they were business vans uh, from an energy company, and then there were two white SUVs, both of them Texas license plates. And then the next day, there was a third SUV also with a Texas license plate. So, you know, probably coming out of, you know, one organization would be my guess, so somebody's renting there. Uh, there's a, you know, a larger group of people. I don't know how long, I, I haven't been looking here since the snows of last week, so I don't know. But it needs to be kept an eye on to find out. But it needs to be kept an eye on to find out.
You have to really pay attention to that.
Right. And I... Yeah. And then I believe that this is also part of what was taking place at the BZI meeting last month. This is the same property.
Yes.
Okay. And I know that you're aware already of checking, having to check, I guess, things for that with regards to residents and so forth.
Probably they didn't approve.
Correct. Okay. All right. Well, then we can discuss the rest of that. Okay.
Is it unreliable to an extent? So we have to watch and care.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. But it has to be looked at. Okay. Thank you very much.
So should we, does the council need to discuss giving an extension for...
Oh, are you talking about for the Groveland?
Yeah.
Property. But well, that would, since Tom actually issues that kind of a, I think Tom would have to make that determination, pardon?
Weather.
Yeah. Brian was suggesting that because of the inclement weather that has come down.
We advocated to double the length of time begin with 30 days to 60. But since nothing's been done, do you really think it's going to happen in the next six or seven years?
That's right. Okay. That's a good question. Good question. Any thoughts from anybody else? Sam, Rich?
I, you know, the weather has turned, but there was plenty of good weather between the time you just notified today.
Okay. So the notification was like from October, correct? Yeah. Because it was a 60-day, I believe. Okay.
Okay. I wanted to put that out there.
Depending on the timing of your end of year meeting, we can address it there.
Oh, to make a determination?
Yeah.
Okay.
Depending on what you have. I know that's not in the site yet.
Right. That's, well, it's going to be towards the very end of the year. We're not sure exactly which day, but that would be within the next three weeks. So are you suggesting that perhaps we let this go until then, pardon?
That would effectively give a couple of more weeks.
That's right. Okay. So that we...
I would be okay with that.
Yeah. All right. So we extend this to, basically almost to the end of the year. We will know our date once we set the actual date of the meeting then, correct? All right. Anybody?
That's right.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Good report. Now, let's go to Park Board. Jean Paxton?
Can you hear me clearly?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes?
Yeah. Even Sam hears you.
Okay. First of all, we are losing our true leader, Skip Mafo, who turned in his resignation starting January 1st, 2026. Skip is leaving due to health reasons. He will be missed personally and professionally. He impacted our community in the very best ways. His tireless volunteering, his cheerful disposition in his financial support have made Michiana Shores a much better place. We can't wait for his return after this chapter is over. The Park Board will be purchasing a new swing set for Kinkane Park. I will send the estimate under separate cover. And I refer to my email that you all have with this report on it.
Okay.
The boosters generously are paying for the down payment of 50% of the price of this. $5,000 of the total is allocated in the Park Board budget for 2026. The remaining balance will be covered with private donations. In addition to the swing set for 2026, the Park Board will be paying all the equipment for $1,500 under the contractor resident, John Willie, heavily mulching Kinkane Park and fixing the fence around the tennis court that was damaged by the tree falling on it. The Park Board has set aside more ambitious goals and will concentrate on maintenance. We have run through the deniable grants, lack of funds, and limited volunteers that this is the best way forward in 2026. Update on saving the forest. $3,500 was donated by five developers to continue this project of saving the large native trees from invasives. The three lots were chosen for the proximity to a wide number of people passing to advertise the project. Most of you have noticed this work at the intersection of El Porto and Brookside, which was done the week after Thanksgiving. The project is headed by the Park Board with financial assistance of the boosters. I am the person responsible for this project. A waiver of liability was signed by Maple City and sent, I've sent this to the council under a separate cover. The project was discussed by the boosters at their last meeting. And a meeting between Rock Tepperman, Dawson Jeffers of Maple City, and I was held at the site before the work began to discuss scope, boundaries, and the timeframe. This project did not go as planned. The big snow head and the work couldn't take place at the planned time. I was not given the waivers which were signed and noted rise beforehand, but were not in my possession. I was out of town when the work began and was given no notice of the work. I wanted a representative of the town to have to be there when the work took place. I also wanted to let the neighbors with adjoining lots know that this work was going to take place. Maple City did a very stringent clearing. The community was shocked at the amount of foliage removed. I have contacted Rock Tepperman and most assertively voiced these issues. I have spoken with Dawson from Maple City and he has sent a letter of apology. In his defense, he thought it was going above and beyond the call of duty when he did the work. With all that said, I truly believe the lots will be beautiful as time passes and irreparable harm has not been done. The lots look as if we have done a controlled burn, which is very common and an effective way to rid invasives. The future of this project will be discussed as a first order of business at our March meeting. And these mistakes will not happen again if there is a future. I have run much from this project and apologize for this phase. And I'd like the town council or anyone to comment or complain directly to me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jean. Are there any questions from anyone? From our council members?
No questions.
No. All right. Good. Thank you, Jean. All right. Let's move on to Road Commissioner Bob Solkowski.
For the month of November, 52 hours, touched up the lighting of the new truck. We installed a saw hardware. We cut a tree. The rest of it was off of snow and salt.
Okay.
And a conversation with Tom Dolph on the street who were kind of... He had warned that the Michiana Shore he has not submitted a bill to Michiana Shores. We have to pay for salt in five years.
Oh.
You did a bill.
I know. He said he would...
Well, it's for God.
Okay.
Moving on, it's $90 a ton of salt. It is four tons of time in the truck. He said we would fill the salt. It's going to be $450.
How much?
$450.
That covers the salt, storage, even for the loader.
Okay.
How much coverage does one five tons provide? Do you give a whole ton?
We can two loads. We get the whole ton done.
Two done?
We never usually do. We do major intersections in hills and curves. We don't usually do side streets. If we do, continue that way, it would be sufficient. We'll probably get done in two, two snow workable.
So one load would do two snow workable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Not two loads for one snow.
Oh, okay. I heard, I mean, two loads for one.
That's a lot, so.
Okay. So one load...
If we do all...
If you do everything, but generally you don't... No. I know that's been pretty much the process for years because I know that we were trying to limit, you know, the amount of chemicals that are put down.
The last one on Sunday, we got a little high because we had flat tire trucks.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Good. Anybody questions right now, council members? No? Okay. Thank you. Let's go Advisory Plan Commission. Isaac didn't join us, did he?
No, not the biggest thing we accomplished at the last meeting. We approved updates of the building permit application.
Okay.
It hasn't been finalized or posted yet. It's coming.
Okay. Thank you. BZI Madfowen, I actually, he sent me a report today and I forwarded that to all of you. So I know that he mentioned two properties and I didn't pay that much attention to them. I don't know if there's anything that we need to bring in.
Three or five swing sets.
Okay.
Carried out and rebuilt.
Okay. So they approved their...
Approved that.
Okay. The other one did not. 3812 or 3611, whatever. 3812.
I think it was 3812.
Brookside.
For SCR.
Okay. All right.
Brian, were you... Yeah. That was denied.
Yeah.
3812 was denied. It's shortened.
Okay. Well, not short-term rental, but special use grant.
Special.
Yeah, that's a, two different things.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you then for that. White ditch drainage board. Brad may be able to help us out today because I missed that meeting this morning, so.
Yeah.
Brad?
There was discussion about it. They passed around a few pictures that were taken before the snow fell as work was being done. All saw this complete with the clearing. It wasn't clear if there was still some stabilization of reseating and that's going to revisit it in the spring regardless. It's understanding.
Okay.
One complaint did come through. Part of the complaint was about the reseating and restabilization. We had almost damaged a couple of trees.
Okay.
That was, that was accepted. But overall, we're just kind of happy with the lack of angry talks.
Yeah.
I made a comment, I think, that comes because of the reach out of the boards coming together and kind of reaching out in the public.
Right. And then I think, oh, I'm sorry.
It'd be respectful of our desires not to tear up the walking path near the Kinkane All Saw.
Yes.
There was a guy driving the tractor and he went out of his way to do a good job. I was very...
Yeah, absolutely. That's true.
I want to point out one thing. I won't name names, but there was a resident who lost his wife the Saturday right before they were going to start and hadn't done anything with several pine trees that were along the ditch. And they actually, he, Alan, I spoke to Alan about it. He actually carefully removed them with his equipment, set them to the side so that the homeowner couldn't return.
Yeah. So I think the contractor, the All Saw Excavating, did, went over and above, you know, for what they were doing. They were extremely good to work with at the scene, extremely understanding and very good. And I, there was no, there's not, no seeding took place yet. All they did is leveled it out because, you know, nothing, but, you know, but it's like now, hopefully in the spring, maybe. So, okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Brad, for that. All right. Website and Technology, Samantha?
Okay. For the website itself, website's good. Getting traffic a little bit more than that last year. There's a little bot that's causing some issues. I'm looking into it. I'm looking into it. It's not causing issues to the site. What happens is it gets, anything nefarious gets blocked, but you know that it was trying to get in. So they're just, have to change a page. In terms of where people are going, they've been hitting the events page, notices, and the bittersweet page is back up in the top 10. But people are also obviously no surprise checking the leaf pickup information and also recycling, probably because of the holidays. Usually you see those kind of pages go up. Next year, as I said, next year, we will be moving the town to Google, the digital workspace. That's planned for next year to have town emails and use Google. We'll do a migration project for some documents and set up emails for town council, park board, any appointed board members. And then the third thing is a new topic that will come up for next year. The Indiana Office of Technology has now added a free level to website hosting where they can host your town website in their, it's their design. You see all their websites, it looks like one of theirs. It sounds like it's totally free, they have caveats. I'm gonna do research for that next year to see if it would fit for what we want to do and let's move us over there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from council? No? Okay. I have nothing newer to report from the NURPS, Northwest Indiana Regional Plan and Commission. They are going to have a full commission meeting this December 18th at 9:00 in the morning. I will be present at that meeting. Flood plant administrator, I don't think Andrew has anything to report now? No? I didn't hear anything. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let's move into unfinished business then. Our thing is discussing next steps regarding the CCMG. Our town applied for, however, did not receive any community crossings grant monies in order for us to work on street pavings. We are fortunate enough, we were fortunate enough to have had two awards, I believe, right, in the last several years. We applied again, but we did not get it. We are able to apply again, as far as I know, this coming July and to move forward with, you know, to see if we may get something, you know, going forward. So, questions or anything from our council members?
No questions, other than we need to jump on it as soon as they open the door.
Yeah.
I don't know. We all found out about this very late at the end of the year.
Yes.
Scrambled, we got our.
Yes.
Done. I don't know if that had anything to do with us not getting.
But we got everything in on time, everything that we needed to do.
It's not the deadline.
Yes.
We need to be more proactive, I think.
Agreed.
What it doesn't work.
Right.
It's just a matter of updating.
Reapply.
Documentation.
Right. Absolutely. Right. Sam?
My question, I have a couple of questions. The fee that we pay to global, are we limited just to the fee that they've earned to this point by submitting the bid?
I believe that that was for the work they did for that and then whatever work they had done for us with regards to assessing the streets, that was, or is this... Joan, did we pay them only once? We have only one invoice for them this year, right now, in the fall?
There was a payment that we had heard tonight for like $2,000.
Yeah, but that's for the work that they did for this application, I believe. I don't think that we had anything else paid because they didn't have to do the big general work for, you know, which would take place if we received, you know, this grant. So right now, I'm not 100% positive that there's gonna be anything else. So I think we need to check in with them. I don't recall from, you know, from the paperwork that we had filled out back in October. You know, we all got the copies of them, you know, that we did. So let's put this, let's actually look at this ourselves and check it out at our end of year meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
The second question I have is, since we put together a list of roads that we would want to have paved, the plan that we had talked about was do those this year or this coming year. Then the July application, if I'm correct, would be for 2027 paving. And we talked about trying to get Michiana Drive done in 2027. So now we have.
Combined.
Two sets of roads that we have identified as needing paving. I think anyone that drives up and down Michiana Drive, it's in bad shape.
Yeah.
If we can get the village of Michiana on a timing perspective, I would hate to see that opportunity slip.
Oh, absolutely. I think what we need to, to get in touch with them and then start talking about it perhaps. I mean, also well in advance so that they can plan whatever it is that they're doing.
Yeah, we need to have a new place in my spring so that.
Yeah. No, it's a good idea to do that.
So I have to talk to the roads that we had on the list right now. And, you know, it was balanced based on cost, whether the national funds would be. There's probably a half a dozen segments that are in need and the other ones can wait. So we can probably work around that.
Yeah, planning for going forward.
What does that?
For the next application.
And the other, the other thought that I had was what Shen was quoting for Michiana Drive was both sides.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay. Well, that would, yeah, cut our costs if we put out.
Absolutely. Get together with Michiana.
Because we can't pay for our whole thing.
Yeah.
No.
So on behalf of it, we need some commitment to how it's going to be paid before we start paving.
Okay. Well, we.
They're supposed to pay for their house and we'll pay for our house.
That's something, make sure you stick to that because.
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure that out. That's not a problem. We'll get that down in paper before.
Be involved in this.
Before anything else. Okay. All right. Good points. Any other points on the roads then?
No.
Nothing? Rich, did you have anything? No? Wasn't sure.
They live on Michiana Drive and it hasn't been done in my memory.
Yeah, they have very long time. No, it's been a long time. Absolutely. Right. So.
I hope with a lot of.
Okay. All right.
My method.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, you know, for the discussion. And then what we can do is, as I said, let's take a look at the documentation we had. We could check with global. And then at the end of the year meeting, you know, we'll know exactly what we have to do. Part B, leaf pickup delayed.
Well, it looks like this question has been answered because I saw in the vouchers that Joan went ahead and paid them, which is fine. My question was, because the leaf pickup is probably gonna be, the second fall pickup is probably gonna be delayed until January. They gave us an option of spreading out the payments, but it's kind of set with our budget for this year, so.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure we wanted to keep it in one.
Yeah.
I wanted to double check with you guys.
We wanted to keep it in what?
What's that?
I didn't understand the last.
Oh, I think we wanted to keep it as we planned, which was.
Pay it all the fall now and then.
Fall now and then maybe a spring one. So you issued a payment within the vouchers today that we saw for the full amount for fall.
I did issue a payment that was just in for.
Yeah. So that's fine. That's what we planned on doing and we should continue that.
Continue that. Right. Okay. Okay. Thank you. And we will let everybody know via the town website, on the town board, you know, with regards to when we hear something about their ability to come out and actually pick up the leaves. But right now, they're so covered with snow and they will be covered with ice, it's gonna take a little while, so. Okay. So everybody just be patient, it's gonna come. Nobody planned on this much snow in November and then our new December here. So. Anyway, new business, setting the date and time for end of the year town council meeting. Joan, do you have something on the calendar already?
I don't remember having anything on it because it got changed last year.
Yes. Okay. So.
There's the 28th, or 29th, 30th, and the 31st, I believe.
So Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Well, Wednesday's usually.
Yes. It doesn't have to be in the evening, it could be afternoon. It depends on the availability of the town council members, of Joan, or Brad. So let's see what it will work out to, what would be the best. So.
Right now, I'm actually in the afternoon on those days.
Thirty?
If that helps.
If we, I would appreciate not doing it on the 29th.
I prefer the 30th.
30. It sounds good to me too. Okay?
Okay. What day is that?
That's Tuesday.
I've got a hearing, just a telephonic one at 2:00. I can almost jump into your meeting.
Okay. Okay. So what time do you want to do that? And what would be good for you, Joan?
She's at 3:00.
So what does it, when?
3:00.
3:00 is good. Everybody else, okay? All right.
So the special meeting would have to be advertised ahead of that?
The public hearing. Public hearing. Yeah. Right. 10 days.
Hour block or half hour requirement?
No. What we do, the way we phrase it is that the town meeting will immediately follow the whatever. So we can actually do it in both at 7:00. I don't know how long this, you don't need to.
You said 3:00.
I mean, I'm sorry, 7:00. I'm just thinking back to the, you know, how we usually do it.
My experience with the public meetings, with the plan commission primarily, hardly anybody shows up.
Right.
We set aside about 10 or 15 minutes.
Yeah, right.
And we wait.
So I advertise at 3:00.
We can advertise at 3:00 and then, you know, okay? All right. Very good.
So this is called, what's this?
It's the end of year.
End of year town council meeting. Okay.
Yes, that's what it's called. Okay. So that will be December.
The public hearing is at 3:00 PM here in the firehouse, at the firehouse.
Okay. Thank you. Brad, anything else for us on the attorney report?
No, just kind of a quick summary, end of the year. We don't have anything pending, some small questions, but nothing as far as our nuisance complaints is resolved. And I don't know, I did just check on the prevailing, they're secure coming up December 15 from the fees.
Yeah. I have not heard yet from them. I reached out before I came to the meeting, but I didn't hear back. You know, the status, just in case something's changed. So, okay.
I just checked the docket and see if it changed.
It's still on. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Okay. Under Ms. Laney's business, we had a question come up about a property owner not being billed for their refuse service and obviously the leaf services has started for a number of years. Now, we don't know how and why this occurred, but a question is of how can, what could be done to determine if there are any other property owners not being billed for either refuse or leaf pickup? And how do we keep track of all of these, you know, kind of things? This was the first time I'd ever heard of something like this taking place. So this would be, you know, something for us to look into, you know, going forward.
I guess my question to the town clerk and the town clerk assistant is how do you, how do you keep track in a log? Do you have a log where you can track of all the payments that are received?
Yes.
That you have an invoice?
It's a separate billing system. And how this got missed, I don't know. It went through two clerk treasurers before it got to me.
I understand.
But what we do now, we're private investigators, I guess you call us, and Brenda's good at it. When people move into town, a lot of them don't check with us. But we have the real estate agents that are selling that check with us before a property is sold so we know who these people are and we can send them a bill.
Those are, those are pretty subjective and loose. You know, you can't rely on people to tell you, come forward and say, I just bought this house. They're not aware of what the process is. I would, I would think the best way to do it would be to contact someone that has the forecoming that handles changes of ownership of properties.
Can we, I don't know. Shall we get notifications from, can you say notifications from Beacon?
I don't know that.
I wouldn't trust.
Yeah, Beacon is not 100%.
I don't know that. It's a totally unrelated process. But we went to, Jean and I went to the county and asked for a report on town-owned properties. And there was a young man that was able to not only give us the report, but to print out these maps that delineated which were town-owned properties for us. They have the data, so we just need to ask the question.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
It's a really good idea. Yeah, that's.
They can help us.
Right.
And is there some type of alert process that we can get?
Or perhaps even a request from them, a report like that, either monthly, you know, quarterly, you know, which would of course be a great aid anyway.
Yeah, they've come to us to verify because they're, they come to, you know, go back and forth to verify things. Pretty helpful. I've helped.
It was a very easy conversation. And they were very helpful. So I don't know if that's still gonna be the case.
It would be the.
It would be between the realtor's office and the realtor's office and assessor's office.
The assessor's office.
Assessor's office is.
The assessor's office handles the sales disclosure forms and that's what's gonna be required in the county's management project.
Right.
As opposed to just a deed and defraulets.
Right. Uh-huh. Okay.
So I represent the assessor's office.
Okay. Well, yeah, that sounds good. Please. Thank you.
So the other, the other thing that, if we can get a list out of public record on all the property numbers in an electronic format and that we can confirm that, I know, Joan, you brought up an instance where someone built a home and never reported it to the county. That's, that's not gonna happen in today's age, so I don't think.
But that must have been some time ago.
I don't think we have any of those out there, but we, we could possibly have missed, for whatever reason, people that have moved in and we haven't built them. So we have to, we have to do some type of cross-reference between what the county says, who the owners are, and what Brenda, your building done. I know you guys, both Joan and Brenda, are paid a separate fee or separate pay for managing the refuse and leaf payments. So I would suggest that, you know, that's why I ask, if you have this data already that you have a billing system, can you get a report out that you can bump it into? And Samantha.
Happy to help. Yeah.
Possibly.
We could sell a little data table.
Laid it together and identify duplicates so that we know that there's a match to your build, that they're set up to be built against what's open in the county.
Yeah. Okay. But I think, well, that's something we have to work on now. Now that we know that there's a problem, that this one thing came up, that let's hope that there's nothing else and let's resolve it. So hopefully Brenda or Joan, Samantha's a whiz, you know, doing all of this. And if she can help us on this, if you've got time, would be, you know, phenomenal doing that. And Brad, thank you for being able to check out with the assessor's office to see, you know, we can get reports from them. Okay. Now we move into communications received. Any news, any communications to anybody? To report? No? No. Okay. Public comments. Anybody want to do any kind of, please?
How you doing? My name is Josh Forworkman. I'm with Lake Shore Recycling and Spoil, a local trash and recycling caller. I'm here to ask a few guys to go up to put out an RFP, that's a request for proposal. That would allow us the opportunity to bid on this community and also, I mean, at the very least, it'll keep Republic, your current caller, honest and you might save some dollars. I can say confidently, and all rates are public record in the new Buffalo, Tom right over. We're about $5 less a can per home.
Than us.
Guys currently, or where you're going, I think you're gonna be about $15.70 here if you renew or extend your contract here in April. To give you that in terms of a five-year contract, that's about $100,000 that you could potentially save. So I'm here to ask that you guys go for bid, basically.
All right. That sounds good. Leave us some information about